Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Wednesday, April 5, 2023. Mr. Pinho, do we have a need for a non-public session this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we have one item under real estate.
Thank you. Before we get into our regular agenda here, I'd like to make a motion that we are going to table Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Board and Committee Appointments due to the fact that there were some length of terms that weren't correct in the notice and there was still some open vacancies there we'd like to fill. So I made a motion. Do I have a second on that?
I will second that.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. Anybody that's here for the Board's appointments, we'll be doing those at a later date. So next on the agenda, consideration of minutes of March 15, 2023. Do we have any corrections or comments? Linda?
I do. On Page One, we need added the people who were present. That's one of the requirements of minutes. And on Page Five, the third paragraph down, it is not... Okay, that's okay. On it's... No, it's on Five, it's on Six. All righty, on Six, the fifth paragraph down, it should say, "Mr. Druin suggested dividers will allow two sports on the floor and take out says..." Starts from "says" all the way to "floor," and then the rest of it can go on. So agreed. "Mr. Druin suggested dividers will allow two sports on the floor at the same time, getting full multipurpose court use."
Okay.
That's all I have.
Anybody else have any? I'd accept the motion. Some of... Motion second to accept the minutes as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay. We have a series of public hearings this evening. We'll jump into these, the first one being, "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the New England Lymon Group to Host a Boat Show on June 10, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Town Docks." Permit Number 2023-27. Do we have somebody here to present that?
Hi, I'm Betsy Bryant. I'm on the Board of Directors for the New England Lymon Group, as well as a co-chair with my husband for the show. I believe this is our 22nd annual... Nothing has really changed. We're just doing the same old boat show, 50s music, a lot of neat boats. We've invited the New Hampshire Boat Museum to come and give us some information about what... Give the public some information about what they're doing with their programs, as well as the Marine Patrol, because we are all about safe boating.
Okay.
We do have an email from the police chief, who has agreed that we don't need to have the police presence, because we haven't had any issues in the past. It is a static show. It's usually a pretty good group. The show is from 9 till 2. We'll be setting up around 8 and then cleaning up right at 2 o'clock.
Okay. And I see you have... You're using the docks marked out that you plan on using there for the duration of the show there?
Correct.
Yep.
We will not block the ramp. We'll be using the ramp for some of the boats to come and go, but normal use, not blocking anything.
Yeah, okay. I'll open up a public hearing for anybody out there that has any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments?
...to issue a temporary event permit to the Lymon Group to host a boat show on June 10, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Town Docks.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next permit is, "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Wolfboro Lions Club to Host the 47th Annual Great Smith River Canoe and Kayak Race at the Albee Beach and the Town Docks on May 20, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-29."
Right, I'm going to step down from this one.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Roger Murray. I'm here on behalf of the Wolfboro Lions Club. The race will follow the same courses in past years, beginning at Albee Beach and ending at the Town Docks. We will have rescue boats out in Lake Wentworth, workers at the Crescent Lake Dam portage, and at the Excelsior Mill portage. Registration starts at 10:00 in the morning. Race starts at 1:15. Everybody should be off the course by 3:00. We've got 19 classes to accommodate people of all ability or inability. And we will work with the fire department to see if we can get some personnel along the Whitewater portion of Smith River, which worked really well last year. They were great. They viewed it as a training opportunity, and we viewed it as a welcome assist. And the funds for the race are used to benefit Wolfboro Lions Club scholarships.
Yep. All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody out there have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments?
I move to issue a temporary event permit to the Wolfboro Lions Club to host the 47th Annual Great Smith River Canoe and Kayak Race at Albee Beach and the Town Docks on May 20, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-29.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you. The next temporary event permit, "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Children's Center to Host a Color Fun Run Walk Along Bridge Falls Path from the Railroad Station out to Cotton Valley Rail Trail on August 6, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-30." Is somebody here for this event?
Hello.
Hi.
My name's Sarah Morgan. I'm on the Board of the Children's Center and Chair of their Fundraising Committee. We were issued this permit last year, but due to unforeseen circumstances from the state, not from the town, we were already granted all of our permits, and then there was an oversight. There was actually some work happening on the rail trail on the state section, so we had to postpone it a year. So we're just hoping that you'll extend. We already got our permitting from the state, we're just waiting on you.
Okay, thank you. Open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience, questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion to issue a temporary permit for the Children's Center to host a color run-walk along the Bridge Falls Path from the railroad station out to Cotton Valley Rail Trail on August 6, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-30.
Second.
Motion second on the floor to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to Host the Annual Bike and Walk Day Throughout Town on May 12, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Permit Number 2023-31." Is somebody here for this one?
Good evening. Bo Betts from Wolfboro Parks and Rec. So Bike and Walk to Work Day, we've done for a long time. We set up two stations in town, one at Huggins Hospital, the other here in Kate Park. We offer a free breakfast. We have the Smoothie Bike that we get from the Makers Mill. It's a great time promoting an alternative transportation to work, or just getting out for the day, and promote healthy lifestyle, and just get people outside in the spring during the beautiful weather.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to host the Annual Bike and Walk Day Throughout Town on May 12, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Permit Number 2023-31. And, by the way, I did it for 14 years with the Carpenter Elementary School kids, and it was always fantastic.
I'll second.
Motion second to approve. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You're all set?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a couple more, actually.
Yeah, you do. "Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to Host the 39th Annual Granite Man Triathlon at Cary Beach and along various state and town roads on August 19, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-32."
So just one minor correction on that permit. It is actually the 40th Annual Granite Man this year. Again, that takes place at Cary Beach. The race begins with a three-quarter mile swim at Cary Beach, followed by a 15-mile bike ride, and finishes with a 4.2-mile run. Last year, we had about 160 participants. That was our first year back since COVID. Registration is open, and we're expecting a lot more participants this year. So it's a very exciting race, and for a great, great cause.
Yep, sounds good. Open up the public hearing. Anybody have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to make a statement. Not sure yet. We may have construction in that area, just to make Parks and Rec aware, depending on how quickly we are able to mobilize for the low-pressure sewer line that was approved on Forest Road.
And I'm sure we'd probably make any combination we need to do for safety along...
Just wanted to make that known.
Yep. All right, thank you. Board members?
I move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to host the 40th Annual Granite Man Triathlon at Cary Beach and along various state and town roads on August 19, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, we're good on that one. Next one, "Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to Host the 29th Annual Granite Kid Triathlon at Brewster Beach and along Clark Road on July 15, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-33."
Another correction on that one. It's actually the 30th Annual. Yes. Another great event, a great family event. Last year, we had a great turnout with over 62 participants. Again, takes place at Brewster Beach. It's a half-mile bike ride, just under a mile run, and a very short swim. Just a great, fun, safe event for all, you know, people around, kids. A lot of fun to be at, so definitely excited to be able to have this event again.
Okay, open up the public hearing for the audience. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Park and Recreation Department to host the 30th Annual Granite Kid Triathlon at Brewster Beach and along Clark Road on July 15, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. I think it should be 11:00 a.m. also. Permit Number 2023-33.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Next one, "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Children's Center to Host Fairyland at Kate Park on July 8, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-34."
My name is June Connors, and I'm on the Board of the Children's Center and the Child Advocacy Center of Carroll County. Tonight, I'm here to ask your approval for three event permits. The first event is for the Children's Center to host our annual Fairyland Festival at Kate Park on Saturday, July 8, from 10 to noon. If you've ever been to Fairyland Festival in the past, you know that you will see lots of families having fun watching professional puppeteers, dancers, and Bobby Bear with his guitar. Children can have their faces... face painted, go on a scavenger hunt, and of course, you can always stop by the gazebo and pick up your fairy wings and wands.
Okay, we'll do these one at a time here if we can. Be good. Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing for this one. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, I just want to remind June, and I didn't catch Sarah, that you need to get a temporary sign permit if you're going to put any signs up.
Yep, I've already done that.
Perfect.
Any other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to issue a temporary event permit for the Children's Center to host a Children's Center at Fairyland at Kate Park on July 8, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that's the first one. Next one, "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Children's Center to Host Fairy Find along Bridge Falls Path on July 8, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. It should be 11:00 a.m., assuming there. Permit Number 2023-35.
Our second event for the Children's Center is Fairy Find, also on July 8, but a bit earlier, from 9 to 11 a.m. This will be our fourth-year holding Fairy Find. Bring your children and your grandchildren to the trail at the Back Bay to enjoy a family-friendly stroll along the trail ending at Center Street. Along the way, children will be keeping an eye out for golden wooden fairies hanging in the trees, and hundreds of painted rocks where they can find their favorite one and take it home. And this has been a big hit over the years. Some children come all dressed up in their fairy costumes and have their photos taken in front of a Fairyland backdrop. Both Fairyland and Fairy Find are strengthening families' events for the Children's Center, and both are free to everyone.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I move to issue a temporary permit for the Children's Center to host a Children's... to host the Fairy Find along Bridge Falls Path on July 8, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Permit Number 2023-35.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, one more to go. "The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to Consider a Temporary Event Permit for the Child Advocacy Center to a Child Safety Event on the Bridge Falls Path and Glendon Street Parking Lot on June 10, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Permit Number 2023-36."
The third event is the First Child Safety Fair, presented by the Child Advocacy Center and is also free to the community. This event will be held on Saturday, June 10, from 10:00 a.m. to noon, at the Advocacy's... at the Advocacy Center's brick site on the trail at Back Bay. This event is all about child safety. I've spoken with the Fire Chief and Police Chief Rondo, who are both very supportive of our Child Safety Fair. There will be a fire truck and fireman to talk to the children about fire safety, a police car and police officer on his bike to speak with the children about bike safety, and also hand... and they will be handing out helmets to any child who needs one. There will be crafts, information about water safety, a table where children can create their very own first aid kit, along with information from the Child Advocacy Center. You can be sure that they will leave... we will leave each event clean and tidy. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Open up a public hearing. Anybody has any questions or comments? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll move to issue a temporary event permit for the Child Advocacy Center to a Child Safety Event on the Bridge Falls Path and Glendon Street Parking Lot on June 10, 2023, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Permit 2023-36.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? You're all set?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We have another public hearing. This will be our second public hearing on this one. In accordance with RSA 41:14-A, notice is hereby given to all residents of Wolfboro, New Hampshire, that a public hearing for the purpose to solicit comments regarding demolition or disposal of a town-owned building on town-owned property. Public hearing shall be held on Wednesday, March 29, 2023, at 6:30, which we had, and April 5, 2023, at 6:30, which we're here for. A vote on the matter by the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen shall be taken to take place on April 19, 2023, at 6:30 at the Great Hall, Town of Wolfboro, 7 Union Street. The purpose of this demolition disposal is for the new Lainer Street Sewer Pump Station. So I'm going to open up the... Well, Mr. Pinho, first of all, do you want to start off with an explanation?
Yeah. So this... The removal of this building is for the installation of the new Lainer Street Pump Station. Since the initial public hearing, I've actually been contacted by a couple people who may have interest in the building, so I think what we can do as well, concurrent to your vote on the 19th, is put out another official request to see if anybody is interested in purchasing and taking the building. But I... we need to be tight on the schedule of that going forward, whereas we're waiting for the pump station to arrive, and once that arrives, we need to get mobilized on it. But I think we have an opportunity to be able to potentially repurpose this building, but we'll see what the information comes back with.
All right, thank you. So I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the audience have any comments or questions on this one? Suzanne?
Do you have any information on the age of the building? From the tax card?
I do not have that in front of me, no.
I was curious to know if the structure was... had any valuable timber in it that could be recycled?
So the engineer who is working through this project has said the building has little to no value. So I have not personally been in it and seen it, but that's what the engineers working on the project have stated to me.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. So do we have any discussion on the board end of it here before we move it over to April 19 for our vote?
Well, it might be nice to see if we could get the date of the building, just for our... under... No. Yeah, I mean, we should get that. I think that's a legitimate question to ask.
Yep.
And we have an answer to next time.
Okay.
I can get that information, and I'll as well work on a post in the paper if anybody wants to bid on it, but we'll as well coordinate with the engineer about the timeframe for removal, because it is tight.
Okay. I don't think we need a vote to move it on. It's just gonna... It'll be on our Agenda Item for April 19. Next on our agenda is a bulk vote. We have weekly manifests of March 17 of $460,000, about $470,000; March 24 of $104,000, plus or minus; and March 31 of $793. We have property tax refunds, intent-to-cuts, current use application updates, tax exemption credits, and a raffle permit for the Wolfboro Lions Club for the Smith River Canoe Race.
I'll make a motion to accept the bulk vote.
Second.
Motion to approve the bulk vote, Items A through E. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, next, we... Somebody walked in after we did this in the first part of the meeting, where we voted to table the Board Appointments, Board and Committee Appointments, to our next meeting, to a future date, rather. There were some open spots and some term dates of expiration that weren't correct in this notice, so that's a big move forward if anybody came in later for that. So, next, under new business, we have approval for a commercial vessel landing permit for the Winnie Adventurer.
I believe this individual is attending remotely.
Yes, we've swapped from Lake Wanapasaki Adventures and hope then, again, this year for approval, please, for the commercial dock usage. And last year had 10 trips, so 20 touches, for under 15 minutes at the commercial docking area. This year, on my application, I submitted for 15 round trips, or 30 stops at the Town Dock. And I will also add that I found out today that my... I'm a million dollars short on liability coverage for the town, which I'm in the process of increasing. I have an agent working on that post haste, and I, you know, asked the Boards, "Consideration, please, for a conditional approval based on my submitting proof through the proper channels to the Town Manager, et cetera, proving to meet your... the insurance liability requirements for the Town of Wolfboro."
Okay. Now, if I recall, the dock we used on this, was this the dock over where the electric boat is parked? Is that what we had last year for this one, to come in for its landing?
Did we build the drop... the other drop-down? There's another drop-down where we... Isn't that where we want them to come in this year?
That's right.
In that one spot in that drop-down.
Yep. So you're aware of that, that there's another dock that wasn't there last year?
Yes, correct. Amy from your offices sent me photographs of the, you know, new location for the commercial docking.
Okay. All right. Board members, any questions or comments?
No, I... As long as they can get that insurance, I'm absolutely fine with it.
Okay.
The only thing we have to make sure is that we either remove or waive the last request, which is request for reserve dates upon departure times and locations, should be attached to this specific document. We don't have that, because they have a very fluid way that they have their departures leave. So we're going to have to make sure that that's removed from this document.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, my only comment is, do they have any general times when they're going to be there? Do you have any time set?
It's... The truth is, it's always been random. Typically, the pickups are around 10:00 or 10:30 in the morning, and the drop-offs are around 4:00 p.m. But it can vary.
Yeah, only reason I think that that gives us some kind of timetable, in case we get somebody else who wants to come in and use it. So knowing that generally it'll be around 10:30 or 4:30, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, that would work for me.
Because that gives us, you know, so if they come...
Is it seven days a week, five days a week?
Well, it's for 15 landings.
15 landings.
Yeah, so is it a specific day?
Well, no, it would be 30. 15 pickups, 15 drop-offs, 30 total.
When he was asking, is there any particular date?
Is it only weekends, weekdays? Do you know?
It's spread out.
Okay.
A lot of the guests are on weekly vacations, and they typically like to go midweek when the lake is quieter. Less on weekends.
And they're fairly quick pull-ins to pick up or drop off the people anyway, I would assume.
Yes, very.
Any other questions or comments?
Someone with the Board like to make a motion on this?
I move to approve the 2023 Commercial Vehicle Landing Permit Winnie Adventures with the estimated time and no designated day.
Second.
Is that also pending the insurance certificate coming through?
Yes, it is. Thank you, Brad, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I... Yes, I.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you are all set, pending your insurance certificate coming through to us.
Excellent. I promise to do that swiftly. Thank you all very, very much.
Okay. Okay, next on our agenda is the pickleball proposal up at Pop Whalen.
Good evening, my name is Joe Santoro. I'm here once again to talk with you about the construction of an indoor pickleball facility that for several years we've been trying to have accomplished. At my last visit here, you gratefully approved the performance of a feasibility study, which has been completed, which is why I'm here tonight with Norway Plains and Paul Blank and also Vic Druin from the Pop Whalen area to answer any technical questions that you may have. But it would appear from what their research has provided that we can put a facility on the location originally suggested by both Linda Murray and Brian Duchesne. And you probably see the maps in front of you right now that indicate we're looking for an indoor facility that could house anywhere from eight to 10 courts and the potential for another three courts on the outside at the full project completion. And so we're here to ask your consent to go forward with what we believe is the next phase, which is the engineering study and code compliance research.
Okay.
And Paul, if you ask me any questions, perhaps you'll come up here and join me? Would you like to come up? Okay.
Well, I, I have a question about the building itself. You're going to build the building and, no, this is for you, Joe. And my understanding is the pickleball club will pay for the building, maintain the building, and, and staff it.
Consistent with what you want, the answer is yes. If, if Parks and Recs has something they want us to do, please tell us, but the answer is we intend to pay for it fully and operate it, maintain it, and, and cover all the costs.
Jim, I'm wondering whether we need to get an MOU, if that's where we're heading on this before we get going. And I think there's some things you feel are missing, but I would like some kind of a document that we know for a fact that it's not going to be on the taxpayer.
So, yeah, we certainly need to have some form of a legal document in place as we move forward. Conceptually, the building does seem to fit the area. However, this is very preliminary. I am not sure, once we really get into the nuts and bolts of the engineering, how well this will work. We've already got a documented parking problem at the location. We have a documented well problem, which is pretty much being maxed out when the arena is in the operation. And I think we have restrictions as to where an additional well could be used. The plan that I have in front of me, I haven't seen an updated one, but the proposal does not show any bathroom facilities or storage facilities. And I think there's a real problem with access and egress for users and emergency services going forward. I think the concept is great. I just, I don't know, as this moves forward, what it really is going to look like and how it will work.
Yeah, one of those is kind of a question I had was the, you know, the restroom facilities here where they got, do you plan on intending to use the facilities inside the Pop Whalen Arena? Are you going to have your own in the building? You know, what would that do if you have them in your own building? Is that going to be an increased load or not, septic system up there, you know, those kind of things?
Unfortunately, the image you have on the screen is outdated. That's not the current version. That one shows, I believe, 10 courts. If you look at the left two courts up and down, that is where a lobby would be along with a bathroom facility, at least two, two locations for that. And as far as the septic systems in turn, perhaps Paul, at this point, you can join me and answer the questions, please.
So maybe you're going to use the mic.
And introduce yourself, please.
Yep.
Just give me a moment to get out.
Oh, you can stay right there, I'll take the mic. Hi, my name is Paul Blanc, I'm with Norway Plains Associates. I did hand out 11x17s, which have a more current layout. That's this one right here that you're looking at. We did consider bathrooms and yes, bathrooms and water. So we would use the fields out there right now. Those are new tanks that were installed about a year ago and the loads we'd calculate, it's already oversized. I forget when the date was when it was designed, but we went through that when Pop Whalen was being designed to check those loads.
But isn't the leach field up on?
It is up, it is up on top.
And that, that, you've also calculated the loads to that field?
Correct. We, we confirmed the calculations that were done about, I think it was 96 or something like that. Yes, so we looked at that when Pop Whalen was taken.
So we, so you're telling us that the leach field is a 1996 leach field?
No, that's when I believe the calculations were done. I'm not sure when it was installed.
I'd like to know when that, that leach field was installed and what, you know, what its life is, just because we're adding, we added more for, for Pop Whalen and if we add this one, we really should know what that capacity is and how old it is.
If it was 96 too, the Abenaki Lodge is new.
But there was, there was a lodge there.
Yeah, there was quite a bit.
Yeah, but not that.
But yeah, we'll look into that, obviously.
We need to, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Make sure it'll accommodate what we're looking for.
All those techs, technical aspects will be taken care of, yeah.
And also, when you get to that level two, probably go to the planning board and stuff, you know, there'd have to be some stormwater management, you know, calculations done because we have a lot of wetlands right up in that area there, so, you know, runoff stuff needs to be, will need to be dealt with.
Absolutely. So that's kind of the biggest thing, actually. Right now, that's what I've been looking at, there is a high probability that the three outside courts that you see there might not be, sorry, the two outside courts might be used for stormwater management to deal with that, for treatment. The ponds that are adjacent to the sidewalk out there and some four bays just for all treatment prior to going into the wetlands, that's the biggest. Yeah, that's the toughest part on this. Everything else I think is pretty straightforward. I don't disagree with parking. I think parking is very valuable out there. All that'll be taken care of during the planning stage.
I guess that's the piece that bothers me the most is the parking. I was up there for a high school game and once you have a high school game going on, you have people at the ski slope, they're parking out on Route 109A. So we're going to have to see if there, there really is any other area there for parking because we're going to need more parking. There's just, we don't have, let me put it this way, there isn't enough parking now for some of the events that go on. So we're going to have to figure that out and that really concerns me because they were, they line up and down 109A.
Yeah, I don't disagree with what you're saying. The plan that you're looking at right now, we're suggesting to add 12 more spots that is right down here on the, just on the, near where the septic tanks are. If you look at where the word center is up on the screen, just below that where the septic tanks are, that area there, and then on that new plan that I gave you, you can see that we bumped out that area that have 12 spots, spots by the maintenance building just behind there could be used as well. We could get 10 spots there, maybe 12. That might be great for employee parking as well. So yeah, we're very conscious of the parking.
How, how many people attended your tournament last year?
Well, the tournament was 350 people, but that's, this is not intended to be a tournament location. This is intended to take care of the people here. Who are residents of the local area.
You'll use this for the tournament, won't you?
No, we'll still use the outside part because we need at least 17, 18 courts for the tournament. This is just for the people who are regular citizens or visitors to Wolfboro to use on an all-season basis. This is not signed for the tournament.
Well, I see 15 right there. Well, 18 and if you get rid of two, well, it wasn't 18, it was 18, then it's 16, you get rid of two, you have 14 or 15 there. That's not enough for a tournament?
Not the way we want to plan around it because if you're counting the ones in the ice rink, we would only use those in foul weather. That's not the intent. The intent here is to provide an indoor facility for the local residents, the people who necessarily can't go to Arizona or Florida for the winter, who need something to help maintain their health and viability, that's what this is for.
I, I would like to see the tournament there.
Well, that could be a future date, but right now that's not the objective. The objective is to provide a, a social and physical recreational area for the people in this room and the local area. And with regard to the parking, Linda, I, if there's ever a conflict or a high demand, I would suggest that the club, along with the rec department, can work out a schedule whereby we even close down during the high peak periods and run, say, Monday through Friday to avoid congestions like you talk about until we work out the final parking solution.
We, we're going to need to have a parking solution. Before we go through with it, we need the solution and if that's what we all agree to, I, you know, if I count, there's going to be, I'm assuming you play doubles all the time?
Yeah, typically, yeah.
So this facility that's winterized would handle about 32 people.
On the court, but put some backup, it's fair to plan on, say, 50. Every weekend, every Saturday and Sunday, we currently have between 45 and 50 people playing and that's what we anticipate would be the demand during the wintertime as well.
Okay, that'll give us something to figure out when we take a look at the parking.
And, um.
Dave, hold on a second. Dave, did you have a question?
When will we, when will you get to us, I'm all about dollars and cents, when will you get to us, or will you know, some kind of construction budget, some kind of yearly operating budget, any type of revenue stream you have come in, in any type of reserve account or endowment that you'll have aside to maintain it so that we don't end up in a situation where in five or 10 years, we have to start raising money through the taxpayers to pay for things?
Right. At this point, Brian, we have all those things covered, but I didn't think you wanted to share them in a public setting because we're probably going to need competitive bids and I'd hate to mention in public what our reserve fund is, but if Jim wants to meet with us or let us meet with him, we'll be happy to share those numbers.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? So you're kind of looking for a?
A green light.
A green light to move forward with, to the next step to develop your plans and?
Yes, consistent with what Jim thinks we should do, we want to be sure we follow all the codes, the requirements and procedures, and we deliver to the people what they really want and what they really need.
It kind of sounded to me like the concerns were, you obviously, parking was going to be a concern to come up with a parking plan.
Yeah.
Obviously, the engineering for stormwater and for sewage disposal and water usage, knowing that our well system is pretty much taxed up there now. And did I miss anything?
I would see, I would like us to start drafting a draft MOU.
Yep.
So that we know for a fact that we're all agreeing on exactly who's going to pay for it and it's not going to be on the back of the, of the taxpayer is the other piece that I want.
Should we, in the MOU, we need to know that that MOU is going to be the beginning and we're going to go into a more binding document going forward.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to get the information up and that we can basically agree. Once the thing is in the process of going to build, we, we would probably go to some kind of legal agreement.
Correct. So would somebody be willing to entertain a motion to, you know, to move forward based on those comments and criteria that we'd like to see brought forward?
And that, that includes you'll be doing the, all the proper DES?
All the what?
DES, Department Environmental Services, you'll be looking?
Okay, so this has to go through planning?
Yes. Wetland mapping, delineations.
So we will have to go through the wetlands mapping. We'll have to use site-specific soil testing. We'll have test pits. We have to go through the DES for the loading for the septic and then adhere to all the stormwater management that the town has here, which we're very familiar with, so.
Okay, perfect.
It's stringent and it's good that it's that way. So that's going to be the most difficult part.
We plan to deliver to the town a fully compliant facility at no cost to the town and all we need is for you to give us a green light to move on to the next step.
Yeah, but we also got to ensure that we have all the documents, so I'll try a motion and see if I got, anywhere is close and feel free, that the board of selectmen agree to have the pickleball club move forward with, and I'm assuming we're talking about a design of a facility, which will be heated, it'll have a sprinkling system, there'll be places for snowmobile, uh, snow removal, it'll have emergency access for fire and ambulance and police service, it will have an emergency egress for users, it, we will have verification that we have enough water and sewer infrastructure to support the facility. We will have a document that documents that there will be adequate parking or some kind of system to ensure that there is adequate parking, that we are clear on any impact to this sensitive wetland areas, that they will enter into a MOU agreement in the beginning, followed by a legal agreement afterwards, and this will all go through the planning process and get approval. Anything else?
Financials.
That's, and, and that they will show Jim the fin, that they have the financial wherewithal to build the building, maintain it now and in the future.
Correct.
That's my motion.
Second, nicely done, Linda. That's hard.
She came prepared.
That's hard.
We have a motion, a second on the floor, any further discussion? Only thing I'd want to say is we did receive a number of emails in support of this that I believe Amy has copies of the stuff, we'd probably make those part of our, make those part of our minutes.
They will be attached to the minutes.
Probably read them all in, yep, thank you. Any other discussion?
One, one last question. If, if you, if they're going to be staffing it, because they're going to be making sure that the building is in operation and all the costs are there, how, how is it staffed? Do we staff it with Parks and Rec and how does it go?
That'd be all figured out in the MOU.
Yep, that's theirs. It will figure it out, figure out the MOU.
Okay.
Okay.
Just for comparison purposes, when I do this in Florida, it's all volunteer and we run it very well.
Okay. So we'll have a vote on this now, all those in favor of approving this, say aye. Aye. Opposed? You're moving forward, Joe.
Thank you.
Pickleball, yeah. Pickleball. Is it bad for all people's health? Yeah. We'll just have town called John Burns. If we could, if we could move out, everybody, if we could move out, please, we still have more business to conduct here. So if we could take our conversations outside, I appreciate it. Thank you. John.
You play pickleball?
Okay.
Everybody who plays in the tri-county, tri-county area.
Okay. Next on our agenda. We still don't have a roof. We have more business to conduct here, thank you, folks. Maybe this week.
But she's able to live in the house.
Oh, I've got three layers of tops on it.
Next on our agenda is Pop Whalen Ice Rink Rates. So, Mr. Chairman, maybe we can get their attention? Excuse me, we still have a meeting going on here, folks. Folks, could we please move the conversations outside? Thank you.
We were kind, now you guys be kind.
Okay, we're going to go into our. We have more business to conduct here. Thank you, folks.
Maybe this week.
Oh, I've got three layers of tops on it.
Next on our agenda is Pop Whalen ice rink rates.
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe we can get their attention?
Excuse me, we still have a meeting going on here, folks. Folks, could we please move the conversations outside? Thank you.
We were kind, now you guys be kind.
Okay, we're going to go into our Pop Whalen ice rink rates next.
So, Mr. Chairman, last meeting, I believe you went through and finalized some rates, and there was one component which was left, which was the 24-hour or full-day rates. You received a memo from the Director of Parks and Recreation discussing the proposed rates of $1,200 a day. You also received backup information that shows the average going forward, and then the other memos associated with it for the development of the rates. One thing that needs to be made clear on this is the full-day rates are really for an organization which comes in and uses the facility, sets up, and they aren't contemplating the breakdown of the vendors or the activity taking place in the arena. Therefore, you know, they're paying that premium for that. You know, if this is a two-day event, I think this boils down to, you know, that Saturday would be a $1,200 price tag for that day. And then the second day, they would be that eight hours where they would be utilizing the facility going forward. Bo Betts, Assistant Director, is here to hopefully answer any questions which you may have, and I can try to answer any questions you may have as well.
Okay, I guess one question I have right off the top of my head, Jim, is if somebody's renting the, you know, the arena portion of the facility for an event for the weekend, say, does that shut down anybody else from coming in and doing anything that they would want one of the meeting rooms for, for a small-type thing? Would that be available at the same timeframe that a large event is going on in the arena?
So I think that's a case-by-case basis. When they, I would think when they come forward and ask to utilize the facility, they would identify that they need those rooms or not. If they do not need those rooms, I think that leaves the opportunity open for us to utilize it. But again, as we just discussed, I'm not sure what the parking would allow if we had an event going on in the arena and somebody wanted to book a room for an additional 25 people. I don't know if we would have the parking to be able to accommodate that. Bo, do you have anything else you may want to add to that?
I just, I think if they're paying the $1,200 to rent out the facility, that they would likely want access to those conference rooms and multipurpose rooms as well.
Does it include all?
It would include the whole, the whole rink.
I have a question.
Sure.
Does it include locker rooms? You know, you're talking about the facility, and then the question is whether that's enough money if they're going to have locker rooms, et cetera. And that's when I have the question, one, if, let's say, I, and this is going to our non-ice time, if I rent the arena for $50 for, $150 for three hours, I'm assuming there are no locker rooms in part of any of these fees that we have here? Or are you planning?
I believe that to be correct. I think it's, it depends on what's going on. Those locker rooms, I believe, are solely for the use of being a locker room and a changing room. But again, to your point, it could be used for, if you have a flower show, you have vendors there, it may be a place where the vendors would use the restroom, where the public may be out in the main lobby area. But I just don't know what they would use those rooms for.
Okay, I want to have broomhockey, all right? And people are getting sweaty, they want to take a shower. This is, I want to make sure that we put everything on here, either the locker rooms are included or they're not included, that we define exactly what that includes, and even with the time. So, because we're going to clean more, we're going to have more expense, so. And I can't tell from here whether we have the locker rooms included or not.
I could see if, say, they were having a card show, a baseball card show or something like that, or something. They might want to use the locker rooms to store valuable things. If they have tables out on the floor and everything, they might use those rooms or the function rooms to lock things up that are going to be used at the show that they don't want anybody messing with and things like that.
That's why I'm asking, are we including locker rooms? I want that.
Now, the other thing I have an issue with is reading it. It said that the $1,200 is for the one day, but if they need additional time to set up and break down, then it could spill into the day before and the day after, is the way it's worded. So I don't know if they're going to have a one-day show and they're going to set up the day before. Do they have to pay two days? It says not. It says they're paying one day. Should they have to pay a separate fee or less of a fee for the day before because they're still going to be tying it up, but their show is not happening? So maybe it's, maybe they, before a show, they can start setting up at noon or something the day before, and they pay a half fee, $600 or something for that? Because what if somebody else wanted to rent it the day before? You lose $1,200 in rentals. If for some reason, two groups wanted to do a Saturday and Sunday, but one grabs it on the Sunday, the Saturday is now wiped out for them.
Right.
Effectively, because they'll be setting up the day before. So it's either going to have to be that they have to set up and get in and out the same day, or if they want to use an additional day on the front or the back end, there should be some kind of fee associated with that.
So you're asking that we institute a set-up and break-down fee?
Only if they're going to go beyond their one-day rental. If they're going to, if they can get there at 5:00 in the morning and get out of there by midnight the same day, that's one day. If they're going to get it, get there at 3:00 the day before and not clean up till 10:00 the following morning, they've just tied up three days potentially.
Did I hear you say, Jim, in your presentation portion of this, that if they came in the day before to set up something like that, it was on the hourly rate? That's what I thought I heard you say, so if they had to, needed...
And I think I tried to paint that out in the memo, but maybe not.
Yep. Well, I heard you say that anyway, so if they came in, like, say, if it's a Sunday event, they came in Saturday afternoon for three or four hours to set up, they'd be paying that hourly rate for that time. Same for breakdown. If it was the next morning, they'd be paying that hourly rate, so there would be fees on each end.
What if somebody wants the Saturday, so then you lock them out?
Well, if they're already booked, if they've rented that time, yeah. If they've rented that time slot, then that time slot's not available, the way I would see it.
Yeah, because you're going to get, I mean, a lot of people will be in and out that day, but you get something like a flower show or a bridal show, they're going to want to set up the day before.
Right.
Yeah.
And that becomes a whole weekend.
Yep.
You know, even if they're just doing it on a Saturday, they're going to be in there from noon on Friday at a minimum through, they're going to be, you know, emptying out by 10, 11, 12 on a Sunday to get everything out of there, so.
And I had kept on asking Jim things, and he made a chart for me. So what I'm looking for is on that chart, all of these are listed, so that there's one piece of paper, you go pick up, and you can say, okay, that does not include locker rooms, this is for this length of time, et cetera. So we don't, we are all looking at the same document and how you calculate it. That's what I'm trying to get.
The rental fee includes our cleanup of the facility afterwards?
Yes.
What about things like, you know, somebody comes in for a birthday party and they want to use the AV system? You know, that should be, if we're going to bring an AV person in to have their stuff plugged in or whatever, that, there needs to be accounting for that, too, because people will want to use that, and...
Yeah, they might want to do announcements.
We don't want anyone coming in and using it and then having a problem with it after because somebody goes and hooks up to it and something happens.
Yeah, during a, during a show, they could be announcing things to the people who are at the show.
On the chart.
The chart.
On the chart.
Right? On it, so there's no, you know, if that's what we...
It's all spelled out.
Yeah. And that we're clear on what it includes and doesn't include.
Okay, sounds like we got more work to do.
Yep.
Is this time-sensitive at all? I mean, do we have people coming now to start asking to book these, or...
I mean, we would like to start booking events in the rink. We don't have anybody currently asking us for a full-day or a weekend rental at this point.
So if we went through to our next meeting, we'd probably be all right?
Yep.
Okay.
You might want to reach out to, or I don't know if Vic does or somebody does, but I was looking at different events that are happening at the Everett Arena down in Concord, and a lot of those groups go from place to place to place to place using their, you know, having their events at different locations. So if we reached out to other community centers, other ranks, other places where they're having events, those same groups might decide, oh, we'll do an event in Wolfboro, too.
Right.
We do one in June here, we do one in August here, we'll do one in July in Wolfboro.
Any comments, Dave, anything? So I give you the information you need, we need moving forward?
We'll certainly try.
If somebody does reach out right now, Bo, is it, are we, are we tracking that so that we can get them an answer? Because we want to obviously lock down as many different events as we possibly can going forward for the summer, especially with the new facilities. Are we, I know you said no one's really contacted yet.
If anybody had reached out to us inquiring about holding an event, we would not turn them away.
Okay, perfect.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. Next, discussion, Friends of Pop Whalen, the letter agreement and locker room usage agreement. Yes, Linda?
I'm going to step down. I fill the Board of Selectmen's seat on the Board of the Friends of Pop Whalen, and I have a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
So I provided you a last-minute update to the letter agreement. The change is highlighted in yellow. We believe this allows us to work in unison with the Friends of Pop Whalen to better deliver MOUs and license agreements to individuals who are, organizations which may want to engage in an agreement regarding the locker room. Had some good correspondence with Victor over the past couple of days on this. He's here to talk about where he's at. Victor?
Thank you. Victor, drawing Friends of Pop Whalen. So on the letter agreement, there's just, as we've kind of got into the operational aspect, we've run into a couple snags, so it's, we essentially are trying to memorialize essentially what we agreed to. So a lot of this stuff that's already in here already resides in various selectman meeting minutes. Some of it's a cleanup, but it's, we never had a separate operating agreement, really, as we went through, so there were various commitments. So this, hopefully, as we started out, kind of summarizes where we are. In 2019, the Friends, we entered into a public-private partnership to renovate the 37-year-old facility. The goal was to take it from a five-month ice arena into a full 12-month recreational facility. And the general premise was to have the town pay for the building structure. So when we created the budget, which I have here, we had created two lines of costs. So the insulation, the chillers, the roof, the structure, the interior lighting to the Pop Whalen was essentially in your column of the ledger sheet. The other column was the Friends of Pop, which was the 10,000-square-foot expansion, which was the new lockers, the lobby area, revised concessions and so forth. So we, you know, we took those two things, 4.2 for you, 2.7 for us, and that's laid out here in the document. Through that, we agreed that we would, you guys would raise your, you know, your portion through tax, you know, through a bond, essentially, if it was approved by the voters, which it was. And then the Friends of Pop would come through private donations, license agreements, advertising, sales and so forth to raise our 2.7. In the course of this agreement, you know, we've gone out to do license agreements and MOUs for the lockers with Brewster, Kingswood and various others to kind of get this hit. Number one, to help us fundraise. Those, both of those entities had been hit up prior. They were part of the needs analysis, so they knew what was coming. And then, you know, essentially, the licensing was, and things, was to help us complete our fundraising effort. So it's a big, it's a big need for us. So essentially, the next-to-last paragraph on the first page is that, you know, we want to just memorialize, that we want to be able to work with these donors that we've committed to. So over the years, so, you know, going back to September of 2019, we've been basically advertising that the Friends of Pop is doing all the naming for these locations. And now we're kind of in a little bit of a, a little bit of a quagmire with trying to figure out what we have rights to and what we don't. So anyway, I just want to make sure that we get that clear. So the goal was to create consistency throughout the thing with, you know, what we're selling to the donors. People have donated, you know, over $2 million. This is just up to $2 million right now, and we're, have a little bit of a jam up. So just want to make sure that we have a clear path to finish doing our fundraising and delivering what we sold, because if we don't, we have a different issue. So given the funding delays of the two major locker MOU users, which is Kingswood and Brewster, basically, I'm asking you to not utilize, given that that was part of our 2.7 million, I'm asking the town to not use those lockers, essentially to lock those off until such time as we receive funding from them. And I know that they've come to the town and said, well, how about if we just use it? They're there. It's like, well, they knew going into this very clearly that had they not committed verbally to do what they, to these lockers, we simply didn't have to build the square footage. We didn't have to build what we built. So we built it for them, and then they backed up and said, why are you here? And then further, they said, well, what rights do you have to negotiate and help with MOUs and license agreements? So why are you here? Why doesn't Jim Pino come? And so, you know, unless you can clone Jim and get him to attend a heck of a lot more meetings, you know, that becomes problematic. So, you know, we are the ones that had gone to them, got the commitments, and then kind of carried the water down the road. So some of this is just memorializing how we got here, but I really would, you know, if you allow them to just say, ah, the lockers are there, you're right, go use them. Number one, I don't think that's good for a public-private partnership, and B, it sends a pretty strong message to them that they never have to pay, right? So someone's going to be stuck with a half a million bucks. So anyway, so I ask that you look at that one seriously. I memorialized in here the banner sales. We had talked about this. This was already done in previous, I think, two meeting minutes, that we would, we would take over the banner sales. The first two years would go to Friends of Pop, the third year would go to the town, so that is just rememorialized here. And then lastly, the Friends of Pop are, you know, we've been working on various, over the last couple of years, we've looked at various grant opportunities, and last year there really wasn't a lot out there. This year, there seems to be some more things brewing that we may be, may be available to us. And so in some of these grants, the Friends of Pop can go in as a nonprofit, and we can apply for these funds. The funds would come into us, we would use those funds to pay your 2.7 million. In some cases, these funds are only available to municipalities. So we would go in, and it says municipality, so the way some of these are written, it says municipality or developer. So you qualify, we're kind of your funding partner in a way, but we're not your developer, right? So Friends of Pop doesn't qualify. So if we were to go get $100,000, we're asking permission to say, come to Jim, say, hey, I need your EIN, I need this information, we're going to file for this. So if we receive those dollars, those dollars are going to come, and we'll know, we'll be able to say, hey, Jim, you should, we got to prove you're going to be expecting $100,000 from X grant application. We're asking that that $100,000 gets applied to our debt, essentially, to the 2.7 that we owe you. So, and I just want you to know that I was on a call today for one of the grants, and beyond, beyond what's built out there, some of these grant programs are built for, not to fund what's built, they're to build, to fund what's coming. to fund what's built, they're to build, to fund what's coming, right, in the future, for projects that are not started. So if we get into those situations, our goal is to continue through and basically say, look, we're working on a new grant opportunity that maybe we need to, need to bring in the Energy Commission, maybe we need to bring in whoever. But some of these grants, we would certainly want to continue through. And it was clear on the meeting that I was on today, that if we started an application and it's like, well, our project doesn't qualify, we could pass that work off and you could continue and carry that water. So, you know, I think that it's, you know, would benefit both parties, you know, as time goes on. So anyway, that's, that's my request for the letter agreement.
And just to clarify, when we went through bond council, because of the proposed donation, Victor had to speak with bond council, and he actually clarified a lot of these commitments relative to the ad space, et cetera, through bond council. So they were aware of this going into the bonding, so it's not a surprise there at all.
That's a tricky, that's a tricky thing right now. There are so many grants out there for so many different projects, and it's very difficult for not only Wolfboro, but for a lot of towns to actually write the grants. They, they, they just, we don't have, we don't have the manpower, other towns don't have the manpower. I just found out from a gentleman from DES that Wolfboro missed out on a $200,000 grant just recently because we didn't have anybody to write it. And that's the way he explained it to me. So you will be writing these grants yourself or have a grant writer working with you?
Yeah, so almost all these programs, we're in pretty good shape. So we started, we think that this one we're working on currently is going to be about 60 hours to prep it.
Yeah.
Of our time. And they will assign, once we get it to the 80% to 90%, they assign you a grant reviewer. So we have to carry money in, in the grant, 2% of whatever the request is essentially, for one of the state-approved firms. And they'll come in and they'll review our application. They won't write our application, but they'll review it and say, look, you know, this paragraph isn't written correctly, that's not what they're asking, you need to do this, or you qualify or don't qualify based on. So they'll guide you, you know, and kind of get you pointed in the right direction, and then it's just time.
Reach out to some people in town, Josh, who owns Makers Mill, fantastic, he's done so much in grant work. Nancy Hirschberg for the Energy Committee is, is working on a grant right now for the solar for the library. So there are people in town that are very good with this, and reach out to them for resource.
Yep.
A couple of questions, Victor, if I could. On the locker room situation there between, with Kingswood and Brewster, I'm assuming that entails four locker rooms, two for Kingswood, two for Brewster?
Yes.
Okay. Could you just refresh my memory on how many locker rooms are, are in the facility now if we take those four away from use?
Yeah, so we built, we built eight.
Okay.
Lockers total, so we have, we have four that will essentially be able for flow.
Mm-hmm.
So whoever's, two, two for the teams that are on the ice, and two for whichever teams are coming up next.
Right.
So that would always kind of maintain a, you know, a flip-flop, and you can, you can run tournaments, you can do whatever. And they're all fully equipped with showers and bathrooms and facilities and stuff.
What would be the thought or the plan moving forward if they don't come through with that, with the money to, that you're looking for, for that $125,000 for each, each locker there? If you end up getting that through grants or the fundraising and stuff like that, what would be your, probably your thought moving forward on the use of those lockers? Would they still be limited to just, would you still consider limiting to just Kingswood and Brewster? Or if it got funded through grants and other monies, would it be open, more open up to the public for use?
Well, I think the town attorney put a time limit on this for us. So if we failed to provide by 2026, if we failed to come up with a user and come up with the dough, essentially, we still have to pay you no matter what. So it's really just reimbursing us.
Yep.
Right? So I guess the town for the near future should be kind of like, eh, it doesn't matter, right? But at the end of the day, I guess, we had a couple of options, and there were people that basically we could have brought in to occupy some of those locker rooms. And essentially, we stood back and, and primarily at Linda's request, and said, let Brewster and let Kingswood do their thing. They were legacy users, give them some grace. And so, and you all know how well I do with grace. So we're giving them grace right now.
And Victor is correct. So we did put a December 31, 2026 timeframe in there, but I would anticipate, you know, if something doesn't transpire by that point, you know, we would go at this in a collaborative effort to try and figure out what we're going to do with those locker rooms in the future.
If you got, if you managed to acquire all the money and finish the locker rooms by 2026, would you be allowed, would we allow him to lease the locker rooms to Brewster and Kingswood on a per-year or couple-year basis in order to recoup some of their money?
Well, I think we haven't gone down, right? We just had the vote, right? We just had the Governor Wentworth School vote a couple of weeks ago. We really haven't gone down this path. That was originally a subject that was broached by Brewster, can we just pay an annual fee? So some of those things may come into play, and if they do, if they come back to life, then we'd come back and say, look, you know, they, they can't write a check today, but if we do it this way, if we structure the deal, then there they go, right? And if that happens, it frees up the facility to flow a little better, too.
Yep.
So, you know, so, you know, we built them for them with that intention, right? So that was, that's the goal at the end of the day, is to have those, those two schools at Pop and use them. So that is, that is the goal. So.
Going over now, a different, little bit of a different subject on the banners and the board advertising. You're talking about a three-year commitment that you're talking to your advertisers with. First two years, you guys, you know, collect the money and use towards your fundraising. The third year goes to the town. What happens after the third year? Does the entire process move over to the town to do, to sell the advertising and stuff at that point?
Yeah, so the goal was at the end of year two, we would turn that over to you so that you can, at that point, we'll have the billing done, we'll have whatever sold, sold. And then if there's more banners to sell, you know, then it would just convert to the town. You guys would send out the invoicing and collect the money direct. So it would change right now, the way the banners are sold, so make checks payable to, you know, Friends of Pop Whalen.
Right.
And we'd update that banner, give it back to you, and just say, make checks payable to, you know, the town of Wolfboro.
Yep.
So that's the, that's how, we, we want to give you a working file and just say, here you go.
Yep.
These are our businesses and.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions or?
I'd like to make a motion that we sign the letter of agreement that's dated March 31, 2023, one that has the highlighting on it.
Second. Motion, a second, to approve the letter agreement dated March 31, 2023. Any other discussion? Saying none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
You abstain?
There you go.
Can you do the locker room? Can you just discuss it and table it?
I think that's a good idea.
So the backup document to that is the locker room, actual locker room agreement. There's a couple of issues that need to be clarified in here. The biggest one is, the term is under item 11. So one of the issues is the board of selectmen can only really enter into a five-year term. And this, the way that the agreement reads, there's a term of the useful life of the building. We've got to negotiate together to figure out what the best way to deal with this going forward is going to be. So with that said, I think it's in the best interest of both us and Back Bay Hockey to table this. If you have questions for Victor, I'm sure he can answer it, but we've got that one real hurdle to work through.
Yeah, hopefully, the duration of the building is more than five years.
Yeah, I think the, you know, this is, this MOU has been around for a while. It came through the town, and we sent it out to Kingswood Brewster, and then Back Bay took the same one, and then it got rejected yesterday by town council because of the term. So anyway, so we have to pretty much, this mechanism of a MOU may need to change, which when we just did the letter agreement, we broadened that wording. So whether it's a lease agreement, or whether it's an MOU, or whatever the town council finally determines is to be an appropriate method to get the job done. I think that's, you know, so there's still, because of that, we probably should table this for today, because we don't, this isn't probably something you guys are authorized to sign right now.
Okay. Okay, we could work through it and.
Pretty fair.
Get to an agreement. All right.
All good.
Thank you, Victor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Victor.
Appreciate it.
Welcome home. Welcome.
Okay, next on our agenda, Port Wedland Drainage Upgrades.
So you may recall, gosh, I guess it was the 2022 warrant, there was a proposal for the Port Wedland Drainage Upgrade. The warrant article was in the amount of $430,290 with $231,203 to be bonded. We were supposed to receive funds from the Port Wedland Association for this work, and we also received the ARPA grant just shy of $200,000. Stantec has initiated the work for this project, and we've, we've run into some fairly significant roadblocks, and they're here tonight to be able to speak to these roadblocks and hopefully get some direction from the board as to where they'd like to go. Jerry Forten.
Jerry Forten from Stantec?
From Stantec, and Jonathan Bork from Stantec. I'll hand it over to them.
Great, thank you, Jim. As Jim said, we were selected to do the Port Wetland Drainage Upgrade project for the town of Wolfboro. As you can see, we have a brief PowerPoint presentation here to kind of give you an overview of the project. We're at about a 30% design right now, and we wanted to come in. We spoke to Jim and Steve and kind of briefed them where we're at. Now, we, Jim asked that we come in and brief the board. So this is a, this is the, some photographs of the Winter Haven Drive. One is looking up the hill, away from the lake. The other one is looking down the hill and along Winter Haven Drive towards Lloyd Road, just for some, some background. What I'll go over today, what I'll go over today is the project background information to brief you on that, the understanding of the issues associated with the project. We'll briefly review some existing conditions and some of the drainage issues going on out there. And then we'll show you a slide of our proposed improvements, talk about what the proposed improvements are, and then talk about an adjacent issue with the Port Wetland Association, which are some ongoing beach erosion problems and some drainage problems associated with the adjacent property. So some background information for the project. Port, Port Wetland and Winter Haven Drive are located adjacent to Winter Harbor, the north side of town, along Route 109. And as you can see in this picture, there are, there's some ongoing drainage erosion issues. The top, the photo on the top right is at the bottom of Winter Haven Road, just above the marina, where the road ends at the lake. And you can see there's quite a bit of sediment buildup on the catch basin there. And the, the bottom right photo is a picture of the beach that is just to the north of where Winter Haven Drive ends, and you can see there's some erosion of the beach there. So there are ongoing erosion and flooding issues. The project is principally to address Winter Haven Road and the drainage issues associated with Winter Haven Road. And the Port Wetland Association is doing a separate project for some beach improvements and some things on their property adjacent to the marina. The town project is NHDES-funded. There's two sources of funding. There's ARPA funding, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, and there's the Clean Water State Revolving Fund funding. Both of those, both of those funds are, make up a proportion of the funding, and the town also has a piece of the funding to make up the difference. Port Wetland Association, I think, has also agreed to contribute to the project. I think that the amount is about $100,000. So, so this project is to address that funding, and principally, the application that was submitted with the project background information. The project was initiated by another consultant, and the, and their work included the initial scoping of the project, some alternative analysis, and then a preferred design of alternative was arrived at, which was a 24-inch closed piping system that extends from Lloyd Road, which is about 300 to 400 feet above where Winter Haven ends at the lake, as you can see on this graphic, extends down to the lake and bypasses the area of the marina off to the south, and then discharges to the lake. And if I can, which button is the pointer on this, Jim?
It doesn't work.
It doesn't, oh, it doesn't work. But essentially, it's that blue line you can see on the right hand of the screen that comes down, there's some red manholes on it, and it, and it jogs to the right and then outlets to the lake. So this funding was approved through DES with a construction budget of about $280,000 based on this concept for the work. Stantec was hired by the town in March of 2022, and that was to do final design and permitting and construction administration for the project. So when we picked up the project, we did an initial review of the existing conditions, tried to understand what was going on, and carried the project from there. So the existing piping system, at Lloyd Road, there's a 24-inch pipe, and that connects to a 12-inch pipe actually running down the hill. And, and that pipe then connects to a manhole at the bottom, and it discharges just above the marina onto a riprap slope through a 15-inch pipe. So that, that pipe has insufficient capacity to handle the runoff that's occurring out there. At Lloyd Road and above Lloyd Road, there's a shallow roadside drainage swale that picks up water along the north side of Winter Haven Road. And that swell, ice is in the winter, you see, you see some photographs here, very recent photographs of ice. This is, the picture on the left is looking south along Winter Haven down towards Lloyd, and the picture on the right is at Lloyd at the intersection. And that sheet of ice, at this time, actually extended all the way down the hill to the marina. There's inadequate capacity in the drain system along Winter Haven Road, and we've estimated it probably has like a one-year storm capacity or less in that drain system. What happens is, when that drain system can no longer handle the runoff, it surcharges and it'll actually run along the roadway down the hill. So looking at the existing conditions, the drainage basin along Winter Haven Road extends So looking at the existing conditions, the drainage basin along Winter Haven Road extends approximately 2,500 feet up the hill above Lloyd to the east, almost to Route 109. There's, there's about a 33-acre area that drains to the intersection. 65% of that drainage basin is group D soil, which is a poor soil. Essentially, soils are rated A through E, and group D is basically almost like a wetland soil.
Thatcherated.
Excuse me?
Thatcherated soil.
Thatcherated, yes. The road grade along Winter Haven Road varies from about 12% near the top to almost 30% at the bottom where, between Lloyd Road and the, and the lake itself. So the hydrograph analysis that we did indicates that the 24-inch pipe won't manage a 100-year storm, and that's what was submitted in the original application to DES.
That it would handle 100 years?
It would not.
It would not? Okay, thank you.
So what you see here is our 30% design. The proposed improvements, we've, we've essentially kept the same concept as the application to DES with some refinements that we believe are necessary. So looking at the closed piping system, at a minimum, it's typical that for a roadway drainage system, any typical roadway is designed to a 10-year storm event. We don't believe this, it's not practical to design to a 100-year storm event per the original application. It can be done with mitigation and detention basins, but being the slopes and on the side of the hill, and the fact that these are existing conditions out there and have been for quite a long time, that the 36-inch diameter pipe will handle a 10-year storm with the additional improvements we've, we've shown here. So the improvements include not only the 36-inch pipe from Lloyd to the lake, a number of manholes on that drain line to step it down the hill, as you can see in the bottom graphic, and that limits the design velocity to 14 feet per second. And then we turn and discharge to the lake beyond the Marina, per the original concept.
Was there any kind of a catch tank, a sediment tank in any of this?
Yes. So there is, so there's a sediment tank proposed at Lloyd Road, and that's consistent with the addition, with the original application to DES. We've kept that as a low-flow bypass designed to the, what's called the water quality flow per DES requirements. So we, it's a, it's about a 3,000-gallon tank that'll, that is actually a, a storm scepter, you would call it, that set, you know, handles TSS, takes the sediment out for, for flows up to about a 1-inch runoff. There'll be concrete head wall with a riprap apron, apron at the pipe outlet, and the scour protection is moved beyond the Marina, so it discharges to a location where there's just a natural bank beyond the Marina. We're also proposing to reconstruct the roadside swale on the north side of Winter Haven Road. That's the swale that's icing up. So we're proposing to open that up as a, as a riprap swale with a, with an underdrain system that'll lower the water table, keep the, keep the capacity of the swale available, keep the swale dry, and, and allow for that swale to function. The bottom with that swale hits Lloyd Road, we've proposed a 36-inch flared inlet to pick up the flow. That, that will be a little bit more robust in terms of not being as susceptible to clogging and, and being able to pick up the peak flow for the 10-year storm. Reconstruction of the driveway culverts along that swale to give those additional capacity, as you can see in one of the photos, if the driveway culvert plugs, then the water just comes out into the road. So we want to keep it in that swale for the entire length of the run to Lloyd. There'll be some grading of, back grading of the swale along Lloyd to capture as much of the flow along Lloyd as we can to direct it back to this system. And essentially, to pick up the south side of Winter Haven Road, there are three culvert crossings. We, we propose to extend an 18-inch pipe up from Lloyd, what's that, about 300 feet, Jonathan?
Yeah, to about Bernard Drive.
To about Bernard Drive, and they'll pick up the south side of the road separately, which is about a third of this catchment area that drains to Lloyd. So that work is beyond the scale of the original application that was submitted to DES, but we believe that work is necessary to pick up the water, to prevent it from surcharging and running down the hill. This is a, this is a graphic. Well, let me, well, let me, let me back up. This is the next, this is the, the issue, one more issue we want to discuss. But in terms of the project scale for Winter Haven Road, the original budget, as you saw, was $280,000 for construction. We've, we've done an estimate associated with our 30% design. We think the value is more in the range of almost $1 million just for the construction. That's, that was everything you saw on that plan. We, we have, when we spoke to Jim and Steve, they asked us to come before you to have this discussion with you relative to the update for the project. We have reached out to New Hampshire DES to, to query whether there would be additional funding available, if the budget could be increased for this project. They said it, it is, and we said, well, we need to speak to the board here in Wolfboro before, and get confirmation that we should pursue that before we go any farther in terms of making a 30% submission or opening up, opening up more conversation with DES. So, so that's where we're at with the, with the project for Winter Haven Road. What I would like to say about the issue relative to the adjacent property, property and the beach erosion is that we are addressing the drainage associated with Winter Haven Road. We have looked beyond the boundaries of the Winter Haven Road catchment area, though, and it's unclear whether the Winter Haven project alone will take care of all the, you know, the associated problems with the beach erosion. Okay? We're, we think it's unlikely. And the reason being is that the adjacent drainage basin, there's a cross culvert in Lloyd Road, maybe 350 feet to the north of the intersection of Lloyd and Winter Haven. That basin is about seven acres in size. That also drains right down to the, to the beach area on the north side, but it's unclear where that outlets. There's a house there. There's an inlet side. You can see it Lloyd, but you can't see an outlet side.
We found it.
So, yeah, well, we did this over the winter, but so there's still two feet of snow out there last time Jonathan went out, went out, so.
We, we went and we traced it all the way down, and it goes into, all of it from that side goes into one little white pipe that lands on the beach and washes out one area. The rest of the erosion on the beach very clearly looks like it's just the water coming down Winter Haven, spilling across their front yard and washing down onto the beach.
Yes, so.
So.
The percentage of how much will be handled, though, is unclear. It's not going to take care of 100% when we fix Winter Haven.
No, it's not going to take for 100, but it's going to do a real, real good job. And then it's going to fall upon the owners of the Port Wetland area to, to maybe help take care of the rest with that one pipe that discharges right onto their beach.
Yes. And you have that pipe, and what's unusual, as you can see here, this is a plan. You can see the catchment area, number one up there, that's adjacent to ours. Ours is the one, the lower, the lower dotted red line, that's where you come down Winter Haven. The one above that, that's seven acres in size, is the basin that goes to the cross culvert to Lloyd. So the other thing that happens is, there's an area of a couple of acres on the west side of Lloyd, and that water sheets directly down to the top of the retaining wall that's above the beach. Now, at one point, if you look at the plan on the bottom here, they installed an 18-inch pipe to an inlet that's above the retaining wall. That's not typical construction when somebody builds a retaining wall. You usually don't have an 18-inch pipe trying to pick up water. The wall will have an underdrain system, which is usually like a 6-inch pipe to relieve groundwater and hydrostatic pressure behind the wall. But it's kind of unusual to see an 18-inch pipe extended up above a wall, which kind of tells us there's a pre-existing condition with a lot of water getting there. So.
The strange thing about looking at that was, we were looking at that wall today, Lyndon and I, and you don't see, above that wall, you don't see any erosion. You don't see anything.
Right.
Where you could see distinct rivers of water separating leaves, moving things. The top of the wall actually has little sticks and little pieces of acorn and stuff on it that you would think would be washed off. Then in front of the wall and the ground, you don't see any place where water, if it was running over and over, would have deteriorated the ground and washed out areas.
Right.
So it's very unusual to look at it and say, hmm, is there a lot of water coming over that wall or not?
There may not be, but there's, we also don't know the condition of the pipe, right?
Yeah.
The pipe could be separated. It's at a very steep angle, you know, and unusual, you don't put a pipe on a 45-degree angle or something, you know what I mean? The joints don't like to stay together when you do that. We're not saying, we're not saying this isn't going to help address the problem.
Yeah.
What we're saying is, we don't want anybody to think that because we're doing Winter Haven, Haven Road, it's going to take care of 100%, 100% of the problem. It's just.
And it's not going to have, it's not going to do anything for a 20-year storm or a 50-year storm.
Correct.
If those hit, you're going to have similar conditions that you have right now. All we're going to do. And it, it'd be interesting to see what percentage of 10-year storms, 20-year storms, 30-year, 40-year storms we're having with climate change and how much we're really going to solve by spending a million bucks, you know?
Correct.
I mean, that's, that's far different than the warrant article that was going to do the whole thing for 480,000.
Yeah.
So.
It's typical to design roadway drainage for a 10-year storm. We've had discussions about planning, you know, planning for updating your subdivision regs. Some communities require detention and water quality, that they incorporate stormwater ponds. The way you can handle larger storm events is to incorporate those ponds. You need easements. You need to acquire land on, on the lots, right, to build these ponds so you can throttle the flow down before you let it go down the hill.
Well, yeah, and I guess that's where I come to next. My understanding is that the bottom of Winter Haven is where it's going to be this catch, this big tank, or is it going to be up at Lloyd? What am I concerned?
It's going to be up at Lloyd. It's not practical to put it at the bottom for maintenance.
Right, and, and you still are going to have that water coming down at a pretty fast clip.
Right. So what we did, what we, what we did with our design, if we step back, the original concept had one pipe running down the hill at like 25%, and then this tank taking the energy out of it.
It's not going to do it.
We don't do things like that. It's just our, this steps the water down the hill, and we limit the velocity by limiting the pipe slope. So this is like going down a set of stairs. Okay? Instead of one big structure at the bottom, we have manholes stepping down the hill to, to control the flow as it goes down. And then it'll turn and go to the lake, and the last bit of that system is at a, at a 1% grade to slow the water down even further before it's discharged onto the riprap.
So I guess the question that Lyndon's trying to get at is if 1 inch of rain fell on that area, on that street, how much would be captured by the piping and how much would still run down the road and into that area?
So the 10-year storm here is about four inches of rain.
Okay.
Four inches of rain.
And how much would, how much would the piping capture?
It'll capture 100% of that four inches with this design. That's, that's what DES requires with the, with their regulations, with the adjustments for the climate change. We're using the latest rainfall data that's required by DES for that storm.
So by, when you put the water and the sediment drops, how much of the sediment drops in that tank, and how much of it keeps on going?
So that's calculated based on what's called, the DES methodology to do that is the water quality flow.
Okay.
So that's, that's 1 inch, that's 1 inch of runoff in the equation, and the tank is designed to treat that runoff. So in other words, you get better water quality by the frequent rainfall events. Say it, there's a, you know, you watch the weather and it's, there's a quarter inch of rain, there's a half inch of rain, there's a third of it, you know, these frequent storms are usually 1 inch or less. So you're, over the course of a year, you're taking the sediment out of each rainfall event. You're not trying to design for a 10-year storm event to control the sediment. It's not, it's not possible, right? You get four inches of rain in 24 hours.
Yeah, and I think that's, and I'm thinking more of like when the snow melts and we get a rainstorm. It may not be four inches, but you're getting the runoff and.
Correct.
I'm on Wolfboro Waters, and we're doing a lot of testing in there, and one of the places we're finding a lot of the phosphorus, obviously, is in the sediment, and the more of these we have coming into the lake.
Right.
The more phosphorus.
Right.
So that's why I'm asking how much you get caught.
Right.
Because the more sediment we could remove, the better off we would be.
Right.
A second tank to drop it in, would that pick up that much more, or for the cost, it wouldn't make much sense?
This is what DES, this is the typical DES design. You treat the 1-inch runoff. The second tank is not going to really gain you anything. What would gain you, what would, the best, the best approach to treat nitrogen and phosphorus and that stuff is open ponds. A stormwater quality pond where you can expose it to sunlight, you can store, you can store it. But it, it requires a different approach. I mean, we could do, we could take a different approach on this and step back, but we would have to go up here into this neighborhood and acquire some land, and then we'd have to build a stormwater pond someplace before we let it into this piping system.
I understand. It's not reasonable. I'm just looking at the, what we can do.
That would be the biggest bang for the buck, though.
I, I understand that, you know, and, but reality is there. So I'm looking at what we can do with what we have.
Right.
And to get as much of the sediment out. Now, the pipes, the water coming down Winter Haven right now is going, it's out in the open. It's open. It can absorb into the land. When you do the pipes, are you going to put any holes in it so it also has the ability to flow and also be absorbed into the, into the land? Is there any way to gain some?
Well, if you look at these grades at, at 12% grade, you've driven on a 12% road, and you've, you've probably, I don't know if you've been out here, but if you see that 25, 30, 28% grade on, on the bottom of Winter Haven, you don't get any infiltration on those kind of slopes.
Up above, you don't have that. As it comes down.
Oh, we're not touching, we are not touching up above.
You are going to.
We're leaving the up above, up above Bernard, it's all stays the same. So it's all open swales, and, and that will help delay it to the extent that it does now.
And once we start at Bernard, you start picking up a 12?
Right. At Bernard, we start to make the improvements because we need the capacity. At the bottom side of this watershed, we need capacity to pick up as much water as possible.
Jerry, on these, I like this, the step design here. It, you know, makes a lot of sense there to keep the water speed under control there. At each of those catch basins there, in the sketch I'm looking at here, it looks like the outlet flow with the 36-inch pipe is at the base of the catch basin. Are there sumps going to be built into those so there'd be any opportunity to do any further filtration or, you know, sedimentation drop at each of those catch basins there, or are they going to be designed to just drop the?
They're manholes?
Manholes, yeah.
They have, they'll have, we, we have the bottom about a foot below the outlet of the pipe.
Okay.
We're, we're 12, 13, what, 14 feet in the ground, so the deeper we go, the.
Right.
You know, we're trying to limit it. At this point, with the drops, you know, those are going to flush. Ideally, with catch basins, you want them off a trunk line because the trunk line flow just flushes them anyway.
Uh huh.
So that's why we have the tank in Lloyd, the low-flow bypasses through the tank and then back into the 36-inch pipe.
Right.
So that will catch that frequent rain event and filter that out. This line will flush just because of the, it's on such a steep drop, and it's dropping all the way down the hill. There's not much you can do to keep it from flushing out if it gets into this.
So there wouldn't be that much maintenance on our end after the fact to clean those sumps out and stuff there, because they'll be basically keeping themselves clean out?
Yeah, that will flush. The tank. Yeah, that will flush. The tank up at Lloyd is put up there so the highway department can get to it and clean it. Because the key thing with that tank is to keep it clean.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Do you have any estimate how quickly that would fill? Would it need to be cleaned? Once a year, twice a year? What are we looking at?
When it gets lots of dirt.
Well, I'm looking, we...
I would, I would say we have to monitor it because we're picking up a pretty large area, and we have one tank, right?
Right.
At that location. So it depends how much of the material gets hung up above the driveway culverts. We're doing the theoretical calculation of it, but, you know, the first year, we'll have to monitor it and see, see how it does.
The reason I ask that is usually we come in once a year and pump out our, our things, and if it's...
That's pretty typical for most municipalities to clean once a year.
But if it isn't realistic, if this is, if it's going to fill and we're going to then not get our bang for the buck, we need to make sure we get in there?
I suspect a lot of it will get trapped because we have open drainage in this situation.
Okay.
So as, a lot of the sand comes from winter operations, right? There's some sanding and there's salting of the roads, but what happens is, you get leaves, you get debris.
Mm-hmm.
But if you had a totally curbed and catch basins and, you know, a, a more of an urban-type drainage system, it would be getting in the basins. When you have the roadside swales, you do get some of that, but you get, you get a lot more of a dispersed type of runoff of that. The data actually shows that roadside swales and open drainage are much better than closed drainage with catch basins, so...
Yeah, that, yeah.
Any other questions?
So, I think, yeah, the, the big takeaway here is, you know, we put out a Warren article that proposed that we were going to solve the beach erosion problem. We're not positive that that is going to happen with this project, and we are significantly short on funds. So I, I think StanTech needs some direction from the Board of Selectmen. What would you like us to continue doing, if anything?
Personally, I think we should move along with this design here. It seems like a lot of thought, a lot of good thought has gone into it, from what I can see of it and everything. And, you know, I like what I see. I understand it's a price tag, but I'd rather spend more money and have it done right than, you know, throw out, you know, $300,000 or so into a, a design and installation or something that's probably not going to work for us, so. Lynda?
Yeah, I, I guess a million dollars, we're going to obviously have to have a Warren article. We're going to have to go back to the voters. There's no way we're going to pull this off without that. And applying to DES, looking at a 2024 Warren article, I don't see that we can not do that.
Right, yep. I'm just curious, do we have, is there people, is anybody from the Port Wedland area there that would have any questions for us, or? Okay, I just wasn't sure if you were here for that or for this one or not, so...
So what we would do is, we would open up the conversation with DES, see if we can increase the funding for the, for the, you know...
For the grants and...
Right, for the estimate we have, and they, they've indicated, right, Jonathan, Kate?
She said it's possible.
It's okay.
It's a large sum of money. When you go from $280,000 to a million, it's, she was pretty shocked.
Yeah.
Right, but we still can't spend the money unless the voters allow us to appropriate, and we appropriate it, and they say, okay, to spend it. So we can get it from DES, but without the voters' approval.
Right.
We were also worried about the Port Wedland, their $100,000 donation. If we weren't going to guarantee that we were going to fix 75% of their issues, would they pull their donation?
I don't, have we gotten in, did we get anything in writing with, from them?
No, I don't believe that there was any document put in place, because I recall that that was a topic of conversation, and it, you wanted, as the board, wanted to make sure that there was an agreement in place before we put a shovel in the ground. And I'll double-check, but I don't ever recall any documentation with them. It almost sounds like we need to have a forum with that group to go over this and let them know that while this is what was proposed, the reality of it is, we're not going to know if it's going to solve the problem until the project's done.
Yeah, our, our point was to say that, you know, it sounds like you read the correspondence, it sounds like it's 100%. And what we're saying is, you know, can't guarantee that. Maybe it takes care of 75% of it, but...
Yeah.
As you saw, you, you went out and took a look, there are extenuating issues that
Right.
Winter Haven doesn't address, so...
Yeah, they, the, the initial assumption was that Winter Haven was causing the washout on the beach area, but that kind of changes when you see a pipe stuck in the middle of the beach with water coming out of it.
Correct.
There was a section, no, Brian, but there was a section that you could see that it was coming from Winter Haven, coming down.
Oh, yeah.
So you had the pipe, and then you had another two washouts that definitely was coming out of Winter Haven.
I would say the 75% is a very conservative figure. I think that it will probably fix more than that. That's just my layperson's opinion.
Right, right. And we, you know, we're not saying, we're not saying it doesn't solve, you know, 90% of the problem. We're saying, no one can put a percentage on it at this point, right? Because there are multiple issues at the beach. It's not just Winter Haven Road, so...
And I think if you go out there and walk, now that the snow's gone, we did today, finding, you know, where it's all coming from, you'll have a little better idea. So I, I think we, we move forward and do what we can, find out from DES, and try to look at a 2024 Warren article and meet with them, you know, because, unless we call a special meeting.
No, I, so I've already got a list of items for the 2024 Warren, already started.
Jerry, you'd said you're, you're thinking right now, you're about a billion dollars construction, stuff on that.
Right.
What would you anticipate, the engineering and oversight and your numbers?
That's the same. We haven't, we don't, the project isn't much different. The value of it changed, but the concept of, we don't see it being much different from what it originally was. So we're not, I mean, we're at 30% design right now. We're kind, we're on target. We just, we have a different design and it, and the construction costs more, so...
Jerry, just for clarity purposes, if, if we continue to authorize you to move forward with this in the hopes of being able to go forward in 2024 with a bond, will you be able to produce a fairly firm number for the December timeframe so that we can put it into the bond?
Yeah, yeah, we'll refine the number. We actually have, we're not ready to release it, but we actually got a pretty detailed estimate. I mean, we, we do all of our, we do a lot of work with DOT, as everybody knows. We kind of do that. We do a lot of estimating, so I feel our numbers are pretty good because we work with DOT all the time, so we're always doing drainage pipe, and we're always bidding stuff and construction. So we use the latest DOT prices in this. We always put some contingency at 30%, so...
The next time you walk the project, can you contact Jim and have him contact...
Sure, yeah.
The board?
We tried on Monday, but the snow was still in the woods, and I said...
Yeah, so, yeah, anytime, because I would love to walk it with you because it helps me learn.
Yeah, we'd like to, you guys, you know, we wanted to inform you now, not after we build it and find out that...
I think it's, it would be good for the board to look at it. It's a very interesting place with all the slopes and the way they've got the water coming down at different spots and going under people's property and...
It's a challenging project, I'll say that.
Yeah, so Jim, we really, it would be nice to have a good estimate for the CIP and this thing kind of written up for CIP.
Yeah, so our CIP process usually closes up in August. I know you guys say you've got a pretty good estimate now. If I, I'll work with you guys, but if we can get that estimate and a breakdown...
Yeah, we'll definitely have it refined by August for sure.
Okay.
We're hoping, I mean, if we can proceed and we can work this out with DES, our next step is to file for a wetlands permit. Because that takes about 90 days to get a permit, so, you know, schedule-wise, as far as how we would envision this working is, if we had everything done by, say, permits in hand, plans on, contract docs on the shelf for bidding in the fall, but by December, let's say, that would have your time. Then it's just being held for the Warren article, and then, once the Warren article happens, if it's a go, the project's ready to be bid and construction in, can start in summer of 2024.
And I'll as well work with StanTech to try and get a meeting scheduled with that association to kind of deliver what we talked about tonight and, and get input from them as well.
Sure.
Would you like a motion from the board to move forward, or pretty much consensus vote for you?
I'm good.
Okay. All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jonathan. Okay, next on our agenda, find my agenda here, here we go. Capital reserve fund expenditure for pickup truck of $60,000.
So if you recall, when we went through the Warren article process, capital reserve funding, it was disclosed that we were going to hopefully make two purchases this year. The first purchase is the replacement of the Foreman's pickup truck within the Highway Department. His current truck will be sent over to solid waste. Steve has got a proposal in front of you, and we did raise and appropriate $300,000, and just so you're aware, we have a balance of $34,150 in that account now, plus the $300,000 that'll be going in. Steve?
Steve Randall, Public Works, looking to release funds for purchases. I have paperwork. Answer any questions if you have them.
Color of the truck?
White.
Is this a truck, Steve, that needs to be built, or is there one, is one...
Nope, it's sitting on a lot in Concord right now.
Sweet.
Yeah, we've had it on hold for about a month.
Yep.
So it's, it's pretty much identical to the one that the Water Department bought last year.
Yep.
Except for a single cab, F-350 toolbox body.
Yep. Then the other truck's set to go up to solid waste, right?
Right, and the existing HD12 will go to solid waste, be re-numbered, and then the new one will be got made with HD12.
And the old solid waste one will go, go away, or...
They don't have one right now. That actually got traded in last fall.
Okay.
So they have the one Chevy pickup right now.
Okay.
Want a motion on that, to approve that? Or are we just good?
I think you want to, yeah, I think you have to have a motion.
Yeah, you have to make a motion.
Move to approve the capital reserve fund expenditure of $60,000 for the pickup?
More than 60.
No more than 60.
Motion a second to prove up to $60,000 to Public Works expenditure for the, for the new truck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's the first one.
Same thing with the second one. It's a Volvo loader. Spreadsheet showing you some of the expenses. It's essentially the same loader that was delivered in the PowerPoint presentation, and it, it falls in the bid requirements as it was, the pricing was New Hampshire, state bid pricing. Any questions you have can be directed to Steve.
No Caterpillar?
Costs too much money.
Too much money. You like Volvos?
I do, actually. And, I mean, we already have three Volvo pieces now. So we have two loaders in the excavator.
And a grader, right?
Excuse me?
And a grader, right?
Oh, that's right, I forgot about the grader. Everybody forgets about the grader.
Yeah, no, I think it looks good. Do I have any questions? I didn't obtain a motion?
Need a motion to spend the, the more than $150,000?
Second.
Is that what I understand?
No, one...
Or 120 for the...
Yeah, I would say $160,000.
I would make it a round number. That would be helpful.
I would. Will you change it to 160, Dave?
160. They'll make a motion we expend 160 for a Volvo loader.
Second.
For the capital reserve fund.
Second.
Motion a second to expend up to $160,000 for the purchase of a new Volvo loader for the Highway Department. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Thank you very much.
Is that one all ready, is that one all ready to go, too, Steve? That loader, is that all ready to go, down with the dealer?
Uh, so that dropped yesterday. They are wiring it up for the broom as we speak. I don't know if the broom is there yet. As of this morning, it wasn't, but it should be there soon.
Just the attachments and...
Yep, loader's ready to go. The plow's still a couple months out, but hopefully we don't need that.
We don't need it.
And then, I am working on some other attachments, which we can talk about at a later date.
Yep.
Because they're not finalized yet, so...
How's the mini excavator coming?
Uh, that should be here, hopefully. And as the, they're putting the rotator on that right now. So then, we're just waiting for a couple more buckets. Hopefully we'll have that within a couple weeks.
And what brand is that one?
That's a Capota.
You should name it Brian.
No problem. I can name them all Brian if you want. I don't care. MB was really good. They gave us a loner yesterday to use for the water leak we had downtown because they didn't have that one ready to go, so they've been really good to work with.
Was it similar to the one you're getting?
I was a, yes, this stuff was a zero-turn versus a regular like we're buying. But, yeah, essentially the same machine.
And it worked nice?
Yeah, it worked great. And that's pretty much the same one we've rented quite often, I guess, over the last few years, from what I was told, so...
Thank you, Steve.
Have a good night, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda, Warren Article 36, Kate Park.
So if you recall, there was a petition warrant article to create a ADA compliant standard ramp in Kate Park. We do have a bid out. The concern is, we don't know what we're going to receive for bids, and the Board of Selectmen does have the abort, ability to waive that bid process going forward through the procurement policy. And on top of that, this is a petition warrant article, so it's really advisory, and we really need the Board of Selectmen's authorization to approve a project and get it moving forward. I believe the petitioner is here this evening to speak on behalf of the project, and again, this was approved by the voters, 912 by 551. I can try to answer any questions you have, and I believe the petitioner can probably answer more as well.
Good evening, John Thurston. Any questions you might have? I gave some things to Amy about the slope requirements for the ADA ramp, and the specifics of that are, under ADA requirements, you are required to build a ramp that's 30 feet long, no higher than 30 inches. That equals a one-inch rise every 12 inches. So we had a rise of 42 inches, so that required us to break our ramp down into two sloping sections with a required five-foot platform in the middle. And as you see on the, do they have the chart in front of them?
I don't know if they do or not. I don't know if Amy got it to them. No. I think she sent it electronically, but I don't know if they received it in paper copy.
I did, so, there was a, there's a, there's a, there's a chart here, and I can give... The initial requirement for a 30-inch rise in 30 feet wasn't, wasn't going to be met, so we had to look at the ADA special exception on number, ADA ramps on 405, which gave us the exception, "In existing sites, buildings and facilities, ramps shall be permitted to have a running slope steeper than 1 to 12 complying with Table 4.05.2 where such slopes are necessary due to space limitations." Slope requirements, a slope steeper than 1 to 8 is prohibited. So if we were to do a little math, we would know that 1 to 12 is a rise of 1 inch and 12 inches of run. A 1 to 8 is a 1-inch rise and 8 inches of run. Our total length of a ramp is 15 feet, converted into inches, is 180 inches divided by 8, gives you a rise of 22.5, which says that we are less steeper than the, the limitation. So we fall under the special exception for our, our ramp requirement. So it is ADA compliant. I also gave a couple other pictures here. I also gave a couple other pictures here. So the first picture is a brick patio, which is the exact same brick, which is, they're perfect bricks. They're four inches by eight inches, which allows you to create that perfect herringbone, which allows the water to get trapped and pulled down into the subsurface. Also, what is special about those bricks is the truncated dome requirement for the visually impaired goes at the beginning and at the end of each ramp. And that brickmaker actually makes those truncated domes in their brick, so they would go together and they actually have the same thickness, so when you're laying them out, it works a lot better in that fashion. The second one is the picture of the post office downtown. And you see the bottom steps are that granite, which is 12-inch wide. And so the picture was to have granite along both sides and across the middle, which, this is the other picture. So you'll have 12-inch wide granite going down the sides. You'll have it at the top and back of each transition area. And then you have the brick in between. And the granite on the sides allows you to anchor in the railing posts, which are also ADA compliant.
And I think just for the public here too, just to let everybody know, we all went down there, what, a week ago was it? And met on site there because there was a potential, another project going along, could go along in the same area as this one with an underground electric service being proposed out there. So we talked about the location of that, how it would fit in with John's proposal here for the ramp and stuff. It looks like it'll, we can make it fit in, you know, the area that we have to work with. So thought it was good that we all went down there and everybody was able to get on the same page, so there wouldn't be any surprises for any of the parties there, you know, working on their separate projects to make sure that they all fit within the footprint of what we need there. So thought that was very good to be able to do that. So what you're looking for us tonight, Jim, is to, because we have an RFP out there right now, Request for Proposals. In case nothing comes in, would you want to have this set up ahead of time? The authorization to waive the procurement policy in the event that we don't get any competitive bids, is what you're looking for?
Yeah, I don't know what Mr. Thurston's schedule is for the project. I think he wants to get moving sooner than later. But it's kind of twofold. If we receive no bids, to be able to waive the process and evaluate the bids. And if we're not satisfied with the bids, to be able to as well waive the process. But the second part would be to authorize the project to move forward because you guys have the authority of these funds where it was a petition warrant article, you know, which is advisory. You need to give that authorization.
Okay. Ryan?
I have a couple of quick questions. How often will the bricks have to be reset? Because if they're not nice and smooth, wheelchairs going down are okay. Wheelchairs going up would be difficult if they hit bricks that weren't exactly even, do you know what I mean?
So the bricks should never have to be reset? Because on a perfect base, you want to bring the crushed stone all the way almost to the top and your bricks will just be setting on that stone surface. So there's no, there's no stone dust underneath of it that's gonna sag out and get spongy. It will all, I mean, that's the whole purpose of the stone and the base, so it never, it never will settle out.
And a second question. Should we, while this is being done, should we put conduits, while everything's dug up and in works, in the ground for future electrical wires? Should they come along somewhere down the road?
I think that's a conversation I can have with Mr. Thurston and probably Barry to figure out what the best avenue to deal with that going forward might be.
So the best area there is, so the total area from the existing granite stairs over to the Winnie Par Building is 10 feet. My area that would take up, the walkway area, would be 6 feet. So that leaves you a remainder, 4 feet, which allows you to do whatever you want to do. And the electrical service nearby makes it pretty easy.
When, if anybody responded to the RFP, what was the closing date on that?
Right off the top of my head, Linda, I can't remember. I can dig it out, though.
So that's next week on Wednesday. And the opening bid is at 2 to 2:30.
Thank you, John.
Is there any current maintenance needed on the adjacent walkway and stairs? Or are they in good shape right now?
Well, those stairs, like all the rest of the stairs, have underpieces. And over the years, there was soil that froze and expanded and pushed some of those out. We've been going around the park and we fixed a lot of the steps. And just happens that those are, you know, they're not bad. They're only missing a piece here or a piece there. So, you know, like the rest of the stairs around the park, I mean, they'll need to be, they'll need to be readdressed and cemented with a grout bag so that everything is held together like the rest of the park. Yep.
I guess my feeling is that if we put out an RFP, we should wait for the RFP to come in and that we do this vote based on that coming in. I mean, if we hadn't put the RFP, I'd have no problem voting it ahead, but why do you put it out and have people out there wanting to put in bids? I don't know why we put it out in the first place.
Okay, and I just want to, you know, if there are any other questions, so that after that bid opening takes place, that, you know, we can come back at the 19th meeting to basically move forward with the project.
We could do a quick meeting on that Wednesday. I would do it on that Wednesday and open up the bids and make a decision.
Okay.
Because if you'd like, I don't know where the rest of the board is. It'll probably be a five-minute meeting and get it done.
Well, I'm ready to go, you know. It's time-sensitive. There's seven to eight weeks there and that brings you to June 9. And the good part about that time schedule is, half of that is heavy machinery. And once you get the walkway and stuff, you're, you know, you've got three weeks of putting in railings and stuff and your machinery is out of there. So they can, they will, at that point, they'll be able to use the existing granite stair set that's in there right now. And I could just rope off that area that I'm working on and it has no effect on anybody else.
Yep. That might be the way to go. If we kind of, if we schedule a meeting, got the time of the bid opening, so we're all there. Open the bids, we're there, we're at a notice meeting and make a decision right then and there and.
I will notice a meeting. We traditionally allow bidders one hour to look at the bids.
Yep.
So I'll schedule a meeting one hour after the opening.
Yep.
Right off the top of my head, is, was it the 12th, John?
Yeah, it was Wednesday, the 12th, at 2 o'clock, 2 to 2:30.
So 3 o'clock?
3 o'clock, yep.
Any further questions for John? Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, John.
Okay.
Like this?
Next on the agenda, request to sell raffle tickets in the Town Hall lobby.
So we've had a request from an individual who would like to sell raffle tickets in the lobby of Town Hall. We did receive a legal opinion stating that it was not a good idea to move forward with such. And I think we should, the board should make a decision and put this one behind us.
I'll make a motion to deny the request of Joseph E. Amatucci to sell raffle tickets in the Town Hall based on the recommendation of the Town Attorney. And the board previously voted not to participate in a raffle.
Second. Motion, a second on the floor, to deny the request to sell raffle tickets in the Town Hall. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Discussion on right-to-know requests regarding the election. I guess Pat had a request come in and, so this is her response, the memo we have here.
That is correct.
I'll read it into, sure, and I'll just read it into the minutes here. During the discussion of Article 12 Libby Museum renovation expansion project at your March 15, 2023 meeting, Mrs. Bodman made her statement, and I quote, that she knows quite a few people did not get their absentee ballots. There are a lot of people who feel very disenfranchised by this vote. I'd like to let her residents know that every effort is made to assure everyone has the right to vote and no one has ever been disenfranchised during any election held in Wolfboro.
I have a little bit more statistics which she sent out. There are 5,424 on the checklist. At the election, 1,518 voted. She sent out 240 absentee ballots. 198 were returned, only 12 were returned after the election. With the amount, once that she sent out and the one, people who came into the Town Hall and filled out their absentee ballot there, we had 346 absentee ballots in this last election. Hmm?
You all had a good chance of them.
Yes. Yep. And a lot of them did.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, a discussion about a resident question with regards to special town meeting.
So you got an opinion from legal counsel, I'll quickly summarize it. RSA 315 does allow for special town meetings to raise and appropriate funds under two circumstances. One, at least 50% of the registered voters in town attend to cast a ballot at that election. Or two, we petition Superior Court for a special town meeting in the event of an emergency. The first process, which requires 50% of the registered voters to turn out, that process can be petition, can be initiated with a petition of 50 voters. But again, once that happens, we have to have 50% of the registered voters come out and cast a ballot for it to be valid, is my understanding, which I believe Linda said we have in excess of 5,400 registered voters. That's a huge, huge turnout. So I think that would be problematic for a special election. And then moving forward, the question becomes what constitutes an emergency under Superior Court? Quick summary is the severity of harm to be avoided, the urgency from the petitioner's need, whether or not the claimed emergency was foreseeable or avoidable, whether the appropriation could have been made at the annual meeting, whether there is an alternative remedy requiring an appropriation. I think that pretty much summarizes, it's a fairly high bar to go forward with a special town meeting. And it's my understanding that we did receive some correspondence back from the Friends of the Libby Museum, which may as well pretty much put that topic behind us.
Suzanne, does that answer your question? Come up if you'd like. Yes, Jim, yep.
It's actually yours as a taxpayer.
Yeah.
Suzanne Ryan. Well, let's just say it this way. That was sort of a hail mary pass to see if maybe we couldn't hold a special town meeting. I would take exception with the first part that you read, that 50%, and then I think the statute says or 50 voters. But it's irrelevant at this time because the, I attended the meeting that Brad attended with the Friends of the Libby and the, I think they even took a vote. The, they're gonna return the funds from the donors. And there were some donors that have had money pledged and so forth for up to five years. And so they basically, whereas the town didn't raise their portion, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they felt that they just had to return those funds. They could not hold them any longer. So the issue is moot. There's no sense in trying to hold a public hearing. There's no sense in trying to get 50 voters because there is no match. The 2.2 is gone, officially gone.
Yep.
But thank you for trying.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, any other business this evening?
I will just have one quick one. I did use, I was away and so I had the packet scanned to me and I looked at it on my iPad. Word documents are fine, but if there are any kind of plans or anything like that, we really need that in a hard copy. Because you can't, there's no way you can magnify it and get to keep on seeing the whole document, so just. Thanks, Dave.
Any other business? Okay, Town Managers Report. I'm sorry, skipped out of Committee Reports. Sorry about that, jumped ahead. Dave?
None.
None. I had a planning board meeting last night and I had a Friends of Libby Museum meeting that Suzanne just mentioned there last week, 1, 2. And as everybody's aware, they did formally send a letter to us saying that they have withdrawn the 2.2 million. They are returning the funds and the pledges back to the donors, so. And that was it for me. Linda?
Yeah, I went to a CIP meeting, which reviewed the process for the 2022 CIP and looking at making changes for, I guess I should say the 2023, and they're gonna make changes for the 2024. I went to a bunch of library interviews for the new Director of the Library. Wolfboro Waters met and reviewed its stormwater regulations, talked about the testing for the summer of 2023. The Assessment Subcommittee of Wolfboro Waters had a meeting with all the lake associations. Brian can fill you in on the EDC. I had two Friends of Pop Whalen meeting. We all went to Kate Park to take a look at the electric and the ramp. So that's all I have.
Luke?
I had a Police Commission meeting and as well, I had a zoning board meeting this past week.
Brian?
So we had a cable franchise meeting that went well and we're slowly plodding along. We had an EDC meeting and I'm very happy with the direction the EDC is going because they really have their bearings and are focused on a couple of good missions. So it's very interesting. We had the meeting at Kate Park and I had a very interesting Energy Committee meeting. I was approached by a middle school student who is part of a club at the middle school called EnviroCon. And what they do is they study environmental issues and every year have a special focus. And this year, their focus was on climate change. So they approached me and said, we have these questions. We'd like to know, how is Wolfboro addressing climate change? Where are you getting funding to help address climate change? So on and so on and so on. They came to us because they went to Oscepe and asked the questions. And Oscepe's answer was, at a And Oscepi's answer was, at a local level, you can't do anything for climate change. So they came to our meeting and they were shocked. And they said how eye-opening and how different and progressive Wolfboro is. So I invited them and the student and her teacher came, and it was fascinating. She was a wonderful, wonderful girl, really enthralled in listening to everything and wants to come to our meetings on a regular basis. So it was fantastic.
Thank you. Town managers' report.
Had a couple of meetings with the fire and police agencies regarding the project, right now what it looks like. The engineer, or the architects will most likely have the plans done in the May timeframe. That way they can get the, the construction manager to get the bids out and we can finalize the guaranteed maximum price contract. The groundbreaking will probably take place in the August timeframe as we move forward. One of the items that I'm going to have to work through, and I'm going to reach out to Joyce tomorrow, we're going to have to see if the library will work with us to allow the contractors to be able to use a portion of the back parking lot during the mobilization for that project. As we know, it's a very tight space. And as this unfolds, there's not a lot of places for them to be able to stage equipment, materials, et cetera. So I'm working with Banwell and CCI on what that model would look like. Also, we had a cable franchise committee meeting, as Brian stated, and we got to have a follow-up coming up next week. From that follow-up meeting, I would, I don't know if we'll come forward and ask for a public hearing for the community to, and the Board of Selectmen, to consider signing a contract or not. We'll have a better handle after that meeting. Also have a meeting tomorrow scheduled with Horizons regarding the low-pressure septic sewer lines. So I'll have a better handle from that meeting. And as we move forward, we're going to have to discuss connection fees and that type of thing as that project, I get a better handle on it tomorrow based on where they are with the design plans. Busy back from vacation, getting caught up and getting some of these projects moving, plus some of the old projects. And amazingly, we're already talking about some 2024 warrant articles.
And you're also back, and you're also back into your office, too, aren't you?
Yeah. So the flood is, repairs are complete. Interestingly enough, the doorway that was sheet rocked over, we actually had the door downstairs in the basement for that to be installed. It was painted. It was ready to go. So that saved us some money there. And it's also a great security measure going forward. That way we can, what will happen is we'll keep my office door open, but the 10 or 11 people that work in that corner, if there's an aggressive person there, they have the ability to aggress a building without going out into the public area. As well today, interestingly enough, we, the, those who don't know, there's a huge safe in the town manager's office. We had a locksmith come in. We've got that safe working. So there'll be a place to secure documents and be able to as well keep my office open so that if I'm not there, staff can aggress if need be. So the other thing is, in the ceiling just above where the freeze occurred, they put a louvered vent in the suspended ceiling to allow some hot air to escape and hopefully prevent a freeze up in the future and some spray foam insulation. So it's been, it's been good to slowly get moved back in.
Nice. Questions from the press?
I don't see her on.
This is not on, okay. Public input?
I don't know how you guys do this. I'm like tired of sitting and hungry.
Kind of pull that bike down. There you go.
I have a teacher voice. I'm going to hand you guys copies of this. So I'll just read it to you.
Could you state your name to start with, please?
My name is Ronnie Harding. I live in Wolfboro.
Okay.
It's easier for me to read this because I get nervous talking. So this is addressed to all of you. Attached, I'm going to give you sample pages of books that many parents, grandparents, and fellow citizens do not believe are appropriate for minors. Because of their sexually explicit graphic illustrations, profanity, vulgar topics, and overall obscenity, they are not desirable inclusions in a taxpayer-funded public library. Contrary to what Mr. Duches has stated, these are not the books that have been around for years and years without issue. These are very recent publications with copyright dates from 2020 to 2023. It's likely that none of you have seen or read these types of books. I hadn't either. And our families were also very misinformed and unaware when they voted in March. However, Bobby Budman and a certain few residents are very aware of these materials, and they knew that if families were fully informed and knew about the nature of these books, the vast majority of families would deem them highly inappropriate and want them removed or at a minimum monitored and restricted to adults only. Thus, it was a rather misleading, deceptive warrant, Article 39. It's disappointing to me, as a former educator, to think that you as a board voted to recommend a warrant without seeing all of these questionable books and examining them first. And I remind you that according to federal law, obscene materials are not a protected First Amendment right, and federal law strictly prohibits the distribution of obscene matter to minors. At this point, I should probably say advisory to anyone who's watching this. My husband didn't want me to tell you this because I never use this language, which is why I am so appalled that this material is a newly popular genre for teen readers, apparently. And this first one that you'll get a copy of is actually, I believe, nationwide, the most requested books, book to be removed from public libraries. The author says, "I got a new [BLEEP] harness today. Can't wait to put it on you. It will fit my favorite [BLEEP] perfectly. You're going to look so hot. I can't wait to have [BLEEP] in my mouth. I'm going to give you the [BLEEP] of your life. Then I want you inside me." That's what I'm talking about. And there's examples of pages that I don't even want to say the words because they're like F-words and terrible things. These are the kind of books that are out there now. These are the kind of books, these last two are already in GWRSD. It's been confirmed by 91A right-to-know request. So I think the issue is people not being aware, not being informed. I didn't know until I started reading some articles that came out in some of my educational online newsletters, that these even existed. So again, I want to emphasize that it's truly disappointing that those warrant articles, I believe, were deceptively announced to voters. And voters are totally unaware that these kind of books exist. Like I said, I bet you've never seen them. I bet you've never read them. I hadn't either. And they're horrendous. They're totally obscene. They're totally not necessary for any reason. And I don't know what the solution is except to try to educate people, especially parents and grandparents. I have shown them to people. I ordered a couple of the books. My husband said, oh, my God, I'm going to get charged with possessing child pornography. He was like worried about ordering these materials. They're really inappropriate. That's, I can't emphasize that enough. And it's not true that they're just the books that have been around for a long time. Nobody has any problem with those. I love all the books that have been around for a long time. This is a brand new, current genre. They're called graphic novels. And believe me, I'll give you these copies. They're extremely graphic. These are just examples. There's much, much worse in the books. So I don't know what the solution is. I don't know whether someone needs to propose another town warrant. My suggestion is that since it passed, and I don't think people had any idea about what they were voting for, because I'm sure everyone I talked to said, ooh, I don't want my kids to read that. Ooh, I don't want that in the library. Ooh, I don't want that distributed by the school district. But they just didn't know. So there are reasons to possibly remove inappropriate books from public libraries and from school libraries. People just didn't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public input? Thank you. You all said, I'll gather for to make sure Suzanne had an opportunity. Can we have a motion in this? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion second going to non-public. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.